Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Marlo Lewis.
Heads bowed and eyes closed in reverence to his utmost his highest. Father God, we come in the name of Jesus just to say thank you for allowing us to meet under these terms, Lord God. We thank you for our listening audience who are live streaming in with us today as we do the people's business. Father God, we ask that you keep us safe, Lord God, as we deal with this disease, this virus that's going around our country, that's affecting us internationally, nationally, statewide and locally. We thank God that it's not in Arcadia as we know of. But Father God, we ask that you just teach us how to be protective of ourselves and our neighbors, Lord God. And thank you for allowing us, again, to do this deal, what we do twice a month, Lord God. And we ask that we do this all in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Dan Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember Natalie Lopez. Ms. Lopez is absent due to her child being sick and she is following the COVID-19 precautions. Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Sherri Gidry. Councilmember Dustin Swear.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment, well, unfortunately tonight, we have no public comment. We'll move on to item two, acceptance of the minutes.
Acceptance of the minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the March 3, 2020 meeting as published on March 12, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and second by Councilman Lewis. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing, seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three, we have no persons to address the council. And we'll move on to item four.
Resolutions. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a maintenance and operations services agreement between the City of New Iberia Sewer District Number One of Iberia Parish and Dove Environmental, Inc.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard. Second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Dove Environmental, Inc., what do they do?
They, I can call Vince up and I'll just say, they help us run the Sewer District Number One plant. They are a subcontractor and we work, they sub with us and the parish and they run the sewage treatment plant at Number One.
Thank you.
Under a contract. Any other questions? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, four B.
Resolution accepting proposal and awarding contract to Southern Gulf Heating and Cooling, LLC for project entitled Wall Mount Air Conditioning Units at Seergate City Park Recreation Center and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contract documents.
Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
Motion by the Mayor Protem and I'll take the second by Councilman Swear. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing, none, please vote your machines. Great, thank you, that's a long time coming. We finally get some air conditioners back at Seergate. Madam Clerk, four C.
Resolution accepting proposal and awarding contract to Power by Bauer, LLC for project entitled Wall Mount Air Conditioning Units at Seergate City Park Recreation Center and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contract documents. That's for the electrical.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard, second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Any discussion on this item? Hearing, none, please vote your machines. Thank you, now those air conditioners have electrical. We'll move on to four D.
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an act of substantial completion from EB Few and Sons, LLC contractor pertaining to the completion of a contract for sewer system improvements to Bayard slash Gene Street areas, LCDBG fiscal year 2017.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor, is that project started in 2017? That's how long it's been going on?
Uh, yes, yes.
Or it was a bunch of projects?
It was the funding that came.
It was the funding came in 17.
It started in 2017, it was awarded in 2018.
Right.
And they just finished it and now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Anything further?
Yeah, just a quick question, uh, because I've called Vince several times concerning sewer on the west end and people's yards and their people's business. Every time we get projects like this, does this make our whole system? Is it, is this a step in making our whole system work more efficient or is, or is it kind of?
Absolutely, no, it's, it's, we're always finding defects and we fix them and every defect that we can find and fix is helping the system altogether.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? Hearing, none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Now we go to four E.
Resolution reappointing Angelique Narcisse to continue service on the municipal civil service board for another term, which would expire on April 1, 2025.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis, do I have a second?
Motion.
Councilman Broussard, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank y'all, can't thank Ms. Narcisse enough, she does a great job. I was very glad to see that she came back because it's, it's tough to lose that experience. So, I was excited about that. Thank y'all. We'll move on to item five A.
Oh wow. My numbers got checked up.
Yeah.
Public hearing on introduction of an ordinance revised in City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances, Chapter 74, Street Sidewalks and Other Public Places to add Section 74-5, Street Lighting Installations Along Existing Streets and to set for public hearing on March 17, 2020 at 5:30 PM.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion to open.
Motion.
Uh, I've got a motion and a second, Councilwoman Ledbetter and Councilman Broussard. Any public comment from live stream? We, uh, none? JC's checking. Uh, we have no public comment. I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion by Councilwoman Ledbetter.
Motion.
Councilman Broussard, thank you very much. Now we move on to.
Mayor, can I have a question on that?
Sure.
Um, can you explain to us about the situation, when these lights would be, have to be added to these streets?
Correct.
Does that, every time it happens to a new place, would that come to the council? Or since it's a part of a new ordinance, it doesn't come to us no more after?
The way it works, the mayor's office would have the discretion, but it's only, remember, it's only for areas of improvement in old areas of our city, but it is not for new subdivision. If it's a new subdivision, the developer has to pay for it. These are just some very, very selective instances where some infill has occurred and it's new construction and money has been spent where we feel we can justify, because remember, those lights cost us over half a million dollars a year. But it would not come back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, well then we'll move on to item five B.
Public hearing on introduction of budget amendment ordinance number 2019-2020-04 amended the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of New Iberia for the year 2019-2020 to amend the budget to appropriate funds to maintain the city marshal's office.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
It was a tie, so, uh, Councilman Swear as the first, Councilman Lewis as the second. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Okay. Councilman Lewis, Councilman Swear, thank y'all. Now we go to five C.
Public hearing on introduction of budget amendment ordinance number 2019-2020-05 amended the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of New Iberia for the year 2019-2020 to amend the budget to adjust for prior year activity and to appropriate air conditioning costs for parks and recreation not spent in prior year.
Thank you. Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Y'all are good, y'all are good. Councilman Swear and Councilman Lewis. Any public comment on this item? No public comment, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Okay, thank y'all, Councilman Lewis, Councilman Swear. Now we move on to item six A.
Adoption, adoption of ordinances. Adoption of the ordinance revised in City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances, Chapter 74, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places to add Section 74-5, Street Lighting Installations Along Existing Streets and to set for public hearing on March 17, 2020 at 5:30 PM.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ledbetter and Councilman Broussard. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion? Please vote your, yes ma'am?
So it's gonna be on public hearing again?
No, I just copied it.
He already had the public hearing.
Right, right, it won't. It will be, this, this ordinance will be adopted if we vote on it tonight. Any other discussion? None? Please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Now we go to six B.
Adoption of budget amendment ordinance number 2019-2020-04 amended the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of New Iberia for the year 2019-2020 to amend the budget to appropriate funds to maintain the city marshal's office.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilman Lewis and Councilwoman Ledbetter, y'all, y'all being a team. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, six C.
Adoption of budget amendment ordinance number 2019-2020-05 amended the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of New Iberia for the year 2019-2020 to amend the budget to adjust for prior year activity and to appropriate air conditioning costs for parks and recreation not spent in prior year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Broussard, do I have a second? Councilman Swear. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven A.
Introduction of special budget amendment, introduction of budget amendment ordinance number 2019-2020-06 amended the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the City of New Iberia for the year 2019-2020 to amend the budget to distribute prior apportionment. Public hearing on this is scheduled for April 7, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Councilman Lewis, Councilman Broussard, is there any discussion on this item?
Do you have your hands out?
I sure can. This is a reallocation of the 435,000 that was gonna be used for the fire department, but we floated a bond to buy two fire trucks and the air packs. So this money, what we're proposing is 50,000 will stay with the fire department. They, uh, the fire chief has done a great job of renovating fire stations, using farmen, using people in-house, remember, our farmen live there, so we would like to continue that. He's putting new floors, he's painting and kind of sprucing those areas up. Many of them have not been, had any kind of upgrade for many, many years. So 50,000 would go toward that. 50,000 would go to the NIPD, we need to purchase some more technology. If we can buy the drug track program and internals affairs program and some training programs, that is, it's expensive, but those things will greatly enhance the PD, especially the drug track program, which is expensive, but it will go a long way to pinpointing the activity and, and just add some technology we don't have. In addition to that, there is some computer equipment and a little bit more basic equipment that we would like to purchase for the dispatch center. So that's where that 50 would go. The next item is 85,000. That would be set aside for the council when we do our master studies of each neighborhood. I am trying to build this up a little bank of money that we will, we will create some projects. And what we've been able to do in the past with the National Historic District is use those matches and get grants and take our small amount of money and really produce a lot of projects. So every chance that I can, I'm trying to take some money and put it aside that it would be evenly distributed between all the districts so that once those master studies of the neighborhoods start beginning to have opportunities for projects, we have some money to match. So that's what we would do with that. And then the big dollar amount, the 250,000, would go, go towards hiring our engineers to begin our future road program. Like we talked about at the last meeting, I don't want to wait till we can float a bond, it's probably a year and a half away. I don't want to wait for that and then say, oh hey, now we'll hire engineers and begin to study our roads. This is something that we could enter into much sooner so that as the bond becomes available, we could float our bond and hit the ground running, because we all drive on our streets, we all get the calls, we all know that we are very much in need of a street program. I just, none of us can swing that, uh, for about another year and a half.
I have a question about that last time you talked about.
Sure.
About the bonds and floating the bonds and so forth. Can we do a, is there a way that we can do a priority list beforehand with the engineers?
Well, we will, that's part of, first you gotta hire the engineers, because they're not gonna do it for nothing. So the plan is to hire the engineers and that would be the first thing they would work on, would be to assess, you know, what roads we're gonna do first.
Right.
And I think that's gonna be a very important piece. We all know in every district, we all have roads, we all have complaints. It's gonna have to prioritize that money, because the first bond that we float in a year and a half should be around 10 million. We both, we all know, that's not enough to fix them all. So we are gonna have to prioritize. Definitely. That's a good question.
Yes, sir. Mayor, um, the mayor, administration before you hired an engineer to do the same thing and you spent a lot of money on, on the roads, the worst to the best. Is there any way we can use any of that information, if it's the same engineer or, or not versus going back? Because they went through every road in the city, put every road the worst to the better and we made some commitments of doing some, but it's all there. I don't think it changed in three years about the, the, the roads as worse in the city, we kind of know who they are.
Yeah.
Is there any way, something can be pulled up for that to be part of it, if we could save us some money?
I'm definitely looking at probably hiring the same engineer in front and I would think they would have those records. I do think that some roads could have, we could have had some roads at the base he roded more and some areas that we have damaged, maybe we didn't have before. But I think that makes sense that we pick up kind of where the city left off. It's our road program only because we're here, it's everybody's roads and it's something that, you're right, if the analysis has already been done and I could utilize it again, why wouldn't we?
And one more question, that bond that we floated for the, for our department, how much it was?
Uh, it's 1.2 million. We're paying half what we were paying for that bond by refinancing it or, you know, paying one off and doing another. I know it was 200 and something thousand a year and now it's 125, I think.
But it's 1.2 million.
1.2 million. That buys our two fire trucks and our air packs.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Further questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you kind of give me, and I don't know if it's top secret or whatever.
Yeah.
NIP Drug Track Program, do you have a brief description of that?
Yeah, that's some technology, it's very expensive, probably costs around $20,000 for that one program. That gives intel and you, the narcotics and detectives will use that program to enter intel on everybody who is active in our community.
Okay.
In the criminal sense. So basically what it does, it is a very extensive program, which was kind of funny, when we called to get the prices, the PD had it from 2004 and was still in the system. They didn't cut the price, but it was still in the system. So it's something that we utilized years ago. It is very effective, it just gives you that intel and gives you that edge that you need. I mean, if we can use technology, we need to, but it is an extensive program to, to track the activities in our community.
And the reason why I ask that, because I feel every, every opportunity we get to let the public know what we're doing to stop some of the things that are happening in the community. Somebody might hear this and say, oh man, I'm not going out there, they got this new program that's gonna give you.
I can, I can tell you that it was very effective before and the PD has asked for that, we could not afford it when we started. In building the PD, the people that we brought on early to help, you know, get everything together, every one of them said, you know, as soon as you can get me this, this is something that would be very effective at, at knocking the crime out here. So that's a good point. Any other discussions?
One more thing to Dan's question.
Sure.
To Dan's point, I would say, or question point. Where, and, and I guess it's, were you trying to see a way to maximize that 250,000?
We might have get away with spending less than that and getting the same result at the end.
Okay, okay.
If it's the same engineer, I mean.
Yeah.
I think we're just, you know, there's more money we can spend somewhere else.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. It's a good point. Anything further? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Item eight A.
Recommendations from planning and zoning. Recommendation adopting an ordinance to abandon a servitude as requested by Preston Guillot, Guillot Realty to abandon parcel 2-2 belonging to the City of New Iberia as shown on the plaque prepared by Jay Weston Mott, professional land surveyor, -DOTD dated February 2, 2020, situated along Lewis Street.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ledbetter, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I recall us, um, when the Wick Corporation owned that land, when it was the De La Iberian, didn't we do a donation, a right of way?
We did, but there's one, Jane's here, but there was one little bitty piece left that kind of got not overlooked, but we, we're making a, this little piece gets added to that.
Okay, because we did do that already at one point.
We did.
Okay.
We did.
I, I want to make sure I wasn't just dreaming.
Yes, sir, Jeff.
And like before, we need to make that subject to whatever utility improvements or rights of way exist.
Yeah. Good. And there is, we, as we found with the other pieces, as they were tearing the De La Iberian down, there's some utilities there, so.
And they may not have rights of way.
Yeah, yeah.
No problem, so.
Good. Anything further?
So, so since we're talking about this property, is, is there any idea of development? I don't want to hear building, I don't want to hear, but is there any talks of development?
They, uh, you know, I think this property, the, the property owner's not here tonight, but definitely, they are showing it to developers. I have given their name a couple of times already. I know of a few businesses who have inquired about, you know, locating there. I mean, it's prime, you could put two, maybe even three, you know, commercial businesses there, so very hopeful, that's a hot corner. If you look at the KFC came on the other side and you kind of look, it's, it's one of our gateways into the city, so I, I think it's gonna be developed fairly quickly. That's the hope.
You know, it's probably, to draw them there is when they paint that building.
Yeah, well, the other thing is, the other thing is when we put up, uh, we have some big letters, that's the corner that y'all approved the money, uh, across from this property where we put the big New Iberia letters and doing some landscaping. And then, you're right, when they paint that building as well.
We're talking about real gas.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a hot corner. Any further discussion? Hearing, none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Discussion items, we have none. Now we'll move on to councilman remarks. Marlo, I'll start on your end.
All right, well, I think everybody got an understanding on COVID-19, uh, coronavirus 19, so, uh, following instructions of federal, state and local government on that, but on, on, on a local level, just to not get away from what we, and what I should be doing on a regular basis in my community. You know, I was riding District Two, uh, last week, some parts of this week, and, uh, you know, the, the, the trash, the trash I see on the streets is, uh, is discouraging, you know, and, 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 and I'm thinking people just riding and throwing trash out, out the windows and, you know, just disrespecting people's communities. Sometime I'm outside picking up trash and somebody coming down the street throw a box of chicken out the car. You know, I mean, you know, just as a plea to the community, man, stop to the nearest garbage can and, and, and put it in the garbage can, help us clean up the city. I mean, uh, if we all chip in on that, I think we can, uh, make an impact in the, in the area of, uh, you know, beautifying our neighborhood, just picking up, you know. We don't have to always build a building, because I'll tell you, I don't think, uh, building a building on a trash pile will make any sense, so, uh, let's start picking up, man, in our communities. That's it.
Thank you. Broussard.
I had a deepest sympathy to my mother-in-law, Sethel Scott, WW Scott, big business people that have been adding to our tax bases from day one, 50 years ago. So, they were a really good family that started in the Iberia, appreciate all their business and a deepest sympathy. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, Iberia Street, as much as you see in little trash, I'm glad we turned that house down on Iberia Street and we got to tear down one or two more in my district. I'm looking, as much as you might have, I'm looking a little better in District Three. You know, so we ride around like you do, so in District Three, I'm seeing some progress. So we want to thank you and your staff for helping us so much get that done.
Dan. Well, I was, uh, excited to see some good news is, of course, we got a tax report and our sales tax been up since October every month. So that's a positive thing that's happening, because I know the mayor likes positive things coming out of the administration. And, uh, the, um, I want to say for the citizens about the virus and, and what they're doing, we could take a lick, I mean, all the businesses that cannot open, but I could tell you, they're listening. You can go around town, you don't see the, the people in the cars, you don't see like you seen last week. So the people are listening and I think, you know, sometime it might be tough on a family, especially when you close a nursing home and you can't see your loved one, uh, for a few weeks. But at the end of the day, it does save lives and it saves the city. And I think, uh, Mayor, I think y'all doing a great job, you and the parish president working together to make sure we, we all on the same page and not one government's doing one thing and the other government's doing another thing. So I just want to thank the citizens for putting up with it, because I know you're so used to doing one thing and any kind of change is not always easy, but I think we could go through it and I think, um, we've been lucky so far and I just want to thank them for all the, everything they're doing to make it work.
Thank you. Deidre.
I just want to say that due to, um, the coronavirus epidemic, pandemic, that our Neighborhood Watch will, um, not be held this month and it's suspended until further notice. All I'm asking is that my constituents and, um, members of the community be safe and be smart and take care of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin.
Yeah, I'd like to just ditto what everyone else is saying up here tonight. We do have a pandemic upon us right now and we just need to stay focused, what we're doing as a community and keep driving forward and hopefully this will, this will all pass. So everyone stay safe and, uh, that's, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna kind of, uh, you know, from our perspective, you know, we had to make our buildings safe, we have to think about our employees, we have made changes, we're doing our best to stay connected, uh, you know, the press is here, the radio will cover it, our meetings are videoed, we're live streaming, we are looking at doing something a little bigger than that very soon, possibly for the next meeting. This was kind of put down on us with the 10 people requirement and everything at very short notice, so we definitely want to keep, you know, follow all the open meeting laws and keep our community informed. We've all been, worked very hard to be transparent. This is a little setback, but I think we'll get there. Just please be patient to our community, you know, be diligent, stay safe, uh, keep be diligent, stay safe, uh, keep washing your hands, keep following all of the guidelines, you know, not packing up in groups. I'm very proud to say that there's been very little so far of people trying to abuse that or, you know, not listening and just disregarding it because, you know, young people are gonna be fine, but you know, when you go home and kill your grandma, it's not too cool. Uh, we need to be vigilant and, uh, you know, that's what it's about. It's about old people. It's about people who are, you know, compromised in their immune system. That's what this is about, you know? We are in the spot where Italy was a couple of weeks ago and when you look at the projections of what could happen, it's, it's scary. It really is. I think we're taking all the precautions from nationally to, you know, the governor, statewide, citywide, parish wide. Larry and I have been meeting, talk every day, uh, met with, uh, law enforcement agencies. We are really, you know, making sure that we send out one message and that we work on this jointly. We don't know from day to day what else is coming down. You know, there could be new mandates from the state. There could be new mandates from the federal government. We'll deal with it. Police department, we've had, uh, probably two meetings a day to keep ourselves abreast of what's happening. If there are more requirements on the police department, uh, we are ready for them. Have really been looking at staff and, and slowly, you know, this is not like a hurricane. A hurricane comes and you can prepare for it. The other thing, you fight it the whole way along. People are out pulling people out of the water, making patrols, you know, doing things, tying things down, uh, those kinda things. This is not that kinda war. It's, it's tough to fight the enemy that you can't see and you don't know the unknown. But, uh, we're weeding through it. Our staff has been very patient. This has been trying on everybody. We, uh, just ask that you, you know, stay patient and stay vigilant. Um, that's about it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, uh, you and the parish president met with the, um, Iberia Medical Center?
We have. We had a meeting yesterday with, uh, someone from health and hospitals as well as the director of, uh, IMC. We've had quite a few phone conferences. We tie into the governor's phone conferences and those updates, but we've had face-to-face meetings. Uh, we had one last night at, uh, courthouse, uh, started at five thirty, a private meeting of kinda all the stakeholders, uh, law enforcement, sheriff's department, uh, you know, everyone who is gonna have to have a, a role in this to keep things moving.
So, our hospital is ready?
Our hospital is ready. Uh, the call was regional, so there were many, many, you know, all parishes of Acadia on the call. We got to hear how other communities are handling this, those that are ready, those that maybe weren't quite ready, who they would partner with. But we are definitely, you know, doing our best to stay on top of this, uh, you know, as, as best we can. Yes, sir.
Can I add one more?
Oh, sure.
And I hate to digress from the important matters, but, um, two people that I hold near and dear to me, uh, one was a elected official, public servant, uh, Mr. Elton Bruce Sard. He lost his brother. Uh, they buried him over the weekend. Uh, Mr. Gregory Bruce Sard, just hope that, I wish that we can pray for the family, give our condolences when we see those people. And also Ms. Marvel Porter, who I believe has, uh, contributed her some of her time to this community. Uh, you know, I know we don't do resolutions on stuff like that, but I just wanted to give my condolences as well to her. Uh, so, uh, the Porter Spencer family and the Bruce Sard family, I wanna give condolences, uh, and prayers and my sympathy to them. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Only other thing, uh, Councilwoman Guidry, her, uh, neighborhood watch meeting will also be rescheduled, uh, as will the master study that we were gonna present for the community in the first week of April, and it goes on and on. All the festivals and all the things that we've talked about over the last few months and promoted, all of them are postponed. The good news is, all these things, everyone still wants them to happen, they're just postponed. We got a great community and when we get this cloud lifted off of us, you know, we're gonna have a lot of events. So, with that, our next meeting is April the seventh. I'll ask for motions to adjourn. Thank you.